I'll get everyone to take their seats. We're gonna go ahead and get started with today's meeting.
All right, we're gonna begin today's meeting with an invocation from Randy Goings and following
the invocation, we will salute our nation's flag. So if you'd all rise with me for our invocation, followed by our flag salute. Randy?
Dear Heavenly Father, we just come before you this morning thanking you for your great love, your mercy and grace for each one of us, dear Father. And being first responders today, dear Father, we want to thank you for our first responders. We want to pray that you will keep them safe as you keep us safe. Dear Father, I just want to also thank you for each one of these supervisors and their staff, dear Father. I thank you for the time they give to serve, trying to make Tulare County a better place for all of us to live, dear Father. We just pray that you will be with them. Bless them, bless their families, dear Father. I thank you for their families that give up time for them to serve Tulare County, dear Father. Dear Father, I pray that you might bless this meeting, every single conversation that's had, dear Father, every single decision that has to be made. I pray that you will give your wisdom. And we ask this in the name of Jesus Christ our Savior. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one on our agenda today is Board of Supervisors Matters and I'm gonna start to my far right, or the far right of the political spectrum with Supervisor Townsend.
Good morning. All right, a few things from last week. Last week, the Tulare County Office of Education had its Excellence in Education Awards and I was honored to be the emcee again this year. Congratulations to all the recipients. It's always great to honor the people that are out there working with the youth of our area so hard and putting so much effort into it. Then we had our Sustainable Corridors Committee for the 191, 98, 99, and 65. We're working on some signage projects and branding with some of the monies that we have have come down. And we also had Caltrans on talking about the Clean California Grants, which this year are a little different than other years that are only to be used along non-highways, so it doesn't really pertain to our sustainable corridors, but we had some good discussion. HHSA, Health and Human Services, had their all-staff meeting this last week and was able to attend the breakfast and that was great to see those, I think about 1,400 people out there on the breakfast session and it was great to see the work that they do. I was also able to go and visit with the California Planning Commissioners and our Economic Development, had a lunch out at the River, out at the Casino in Porterville, and then a tour of the Seton Pistachio Plant. It was great to be around. I think there's about 35 or 40 Planning Commissioners out there, so thanks to Mike Washam who's back here for inviting me to go along with that tour. It was great. And then this weekend, I had again the honor of emceeing the Veterans Homecoming Queen, Ms. Porterville Pageant in Porterville, and it is a very patriotic event that happens each year that honors each of the girls that are up in the pageant, honor veterans in some way or another. There was 13 this year, so it was a little bit of a longer pageant. And congratulations to the new queen, Jonna Rohrbach. This week, tomorrow, have a check-in with HHSA, monthly check-in. Then there's a ribbon cutting at the Hershey Ranch up on the Tulare River Indian Reservation, some land that they have just reacquired, and so they're going to be putting some housing and I think some elder housing up in that area, so I'll be up there to congratulate them. On Thursday, Patrick over here is going to attend our Government Affairs Committee meeting for a chamber. Yeah, you're gonna do it because I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be having, actually, the other thing is that Tulare, the Tulie East Groundwater Sustainability Agency, newly formed agency over at Research for Hire, I'll be sitting in on that as the vice chair. On Thursday evening, we'll be having a town hall up in Camp Nelson, I think at 4:30. And then Saturday is the Our Heroes Dreams Golf Tournament. It's going to be at River Island Country Club up in Springville this year, and they've asked me to come over and offer the invocation for that event, which I am happy to do. And that's all I have to report. Mr. Chair.
That's a pretty short list. Thank you. Supervisor Valero.
Well, good morning Tulare County. This past weekend was a very busy weekend in District 4 and around Tulare County, and the weather couldn't have been better for getting outside and connecting with our communities. But first, I do want to thank Supervisor Townsend for your leadership on the Corridors Committee meeting that we attended. It was a great meeting, being able to identify projects across Tulare County, and also kudos on a job well done with your emceeing role at the Tulare County Office of Education Excellence in Education Awards as well. For starters, I drove up to the Three Rivers area to participate in the Neighborhood Block Party. This event focused on wildfire and disaster preparedness with food, prizes, and fun. Super excited about the goat grazing project that will include more than 500 goats in and around the Cherokee Oaks community. After that event, I traveled to Exeter where I attended the FoodLink's Harvest Festival. I always enjoy the mission and vision of FoodLink, especially now more than ever. It is my hope that FoodLink will be able to fill the gap during these difficult times where Tulare County families will see the greatest impact. I also drove down the street to the Harvest of Handwoven Event, where the handweavers of the Valley Guild has extremely talented individuals. My former high school teacher is in the guild and I got to tour the many booths with beautiful garments, yarn, gourds, scarves, and more on display. I didn't know this group existed until Saturday, and it's truly a neat community. I also went to the Dia de los Muertos event put on by the League of Mexican-American Women. This event included mariachi, ballet for the core, dancing, food, and entertainment. Great job to the league for putting on amazing events all year round. Thereafter, I attended the 10-year anniversary of Teen Challenge in the outskirts of Reedley, Bud in Tulare County. This space is a residential facility aimed at seeing people freed from life controlling issues through transformation, discipleship, and long-term residential programs. It was a beautiful evening filled with testimonies and community impact. This week includes the following: an Ivanhoe Community Council meeting, our Resource Family Trunk or Treat event, followed by a Badger Community Roundtable midweek, construction kickoff of the HHSA New Behavioral Health Urgent Care Crisis Center. Thank you Natalie Boland for your leadership on that, a much-needed project here in Tulare County. I also have an HHSA Leadership Meeting and then a Dinuba Women's Club Evening Event. And then on Friday, I will be participating in a few trunk or treat events around District 4. And that is all I have. Chair.
All right, Supervisor Makari.
Why, thank you, Mr. Chair. I truly appreciate it.
You're quite welcome, sir.
I really do. Thank you. Well, I want to start off this morning by thanking HHSA staff. Again, this is a carryover from last week. They've been working extremely hard on a problem area that we have. Supervisor Townsend, it's in his district, but he's been extremely involved and helpful to do what we can. And it is truly a heartbreaking story, and HHSA, environmental health, behavioral health, everyone's working hard. So thank you. You truly deserve a kudos for what you're doing because it's an amazing job. So thank you very much, and thank you for keeping us so well informed. I also attended the Sustainable Corridor Meeting. I met with the UC Extension Cooperative Extension, Lionel Jimenez. We had breakfast, excuse me, had coffee, and it was nice to sit down with him, and he's really wanted to work out with the board and see what we can do to develop a stronger relationship. We've always had a good relationship with him, so it's great to see Lionel reaching out and for us to continue that relationship. I attended the HHSA All Staff. I want to thank Donna for allowing us an opportunity to get up on stage and talk to everybody and then tell staff how much we truly appreciate them. It's nice. I think they need to hear it from us because the information that gets put out is not accurate in the slightest bit. So they want to hear it from us, and I'm really glad, and everybody's been great. The letters of support and the phone calls we've gotten from county staff has been amazing. So thank you very much. We truly appreciate that. I went with, on the, I'm sorry, K-T-A side, I went and presented the Centenarian Award to Annabelle Inlo. Annabelle is basically my grandmother from an extended family, basically. So it was great. She couldn't make it when we did our presentation here, and I went with Bonnie, and we went over there and had a great time, and Annabelle was extremely excited. So we used to play poker with her, and she should just kick our rear. I mean, she was a good poker player. So anyway, Grandma Annabelle, we wish you all the best and congratulations. Saturday morning was, I started off that day, I teach hunter safety classes, and so we had a class that we taught, and it was just amazing how people don't want to follow statistics. During COVID, they stopped the in-person class, then they tried to make it strictly an online class, and then the statistics went right back up to show hunter relation accidents, including fatalities, on the rise. So this class has been proven to reduce injuries, reduce incidents, and reduce deaths. So I'm glad that we're back to an in-person class, and we're working on it, and it's very well attended. We have people come from all over California because the classrooms are just so full. And so, I mean, it's just amazing how far these people drive. They'll actually pull up in front of the place and sleep at night in order to get up the next morning to be at the class. I also went to the FoodLink Deepwater Harvest Festival. They're a great partner to work with, and they do provide a lot to our county, so it was a pleasure to go there and support them. Then Saturday evening, I went to the Cash Murder Mystery. It was a fundraiser for the museum there in Exeter, and it was quite an interesting evening. It was a lot of fun, and I look forward to them having more events. After that, I went to the Sheriff's Department Powell Barn Burner. It's a fundraiser that they do for the Powell Activities League, Police Activities League program, and it was a great time.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one on our agenda today is Board of Supervisors Matters, and I'm going to start to my far right, or the far right of the political spectrum with Supervisor Townsend.
Good morning. All right, a few things from last week. Last week, the Tulare County Office of Education had its Excellence in Education Awards, and I was honored to be the emcee again this year. Congratulations to all the recipients. It's always great to honor the people that are out there working with the youth of our area so hard and putting so much effort into it. Then we had our Sustainable Corridors Committee for the 191, 198, 99, and 65. We're working on some signage projects and branding with some of the monies that we have have come down. And we also had Caltrans on talking about the Clean California Grants, which this year are a little different than other years that are only to be used along non-highways, so it doesn't really pertain to our sustainable corridors, but we had some good discussion. HHSA, Health and Human Services, had their all-staff meeting this last week, and I was able to attend the breakfast, and that was great to see those, I think about 1,400 people out there on the breakfast session, and it was great to see the work that they do. I was also able to go and visit with the California Planning Commissioners and our Economic Development, had a lunch out at the River, out at the casino in Porterville, and then a tour of the Seton Pistachio Plant. It was great to be around, I think there's about 35 or 40 Planning Commissioners out there. So thanks to, Mike Washam is back here for inviting me to go along with that tour, it was great. And then this weekend, I had again the honor of emceeing the Veterans Homecoming Queen, Ms. Porterville, pageant in Porterville, and it is a very patriotic event that happens each year that honors each of the girls that are up in the pageant, honor veterans in some way or another. There was 13 this year, so it was a little bit of a longer pageant. And congratulations to the new queen, Jonna Rohrbach. This week, tomorrow, have a check-in with HHSA, monthly check-in. Then there's a ribbon-cutting at the Hershey Ranch up on the Tulley River Indian Reservation, some land that they have just re-acquired, and so they're going to be putting some housing, and I think some elder housing up in that area, so I'll be up there to congratulate them. On Thursday, Patrick over here is going to attend our Government Affairs Committee meeting for a chamber, yeah, you're gonna do it. Because I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be having, actually, the other thing is that Tulare, the Tulie East Groundwater Sustainability Agency, newly-formed agency over at Research for Hire, I'll be sitting in on that as the vice chair. On Thursday evening, we'll be having a town hall up in Camp Nelson, I think at 4:30. And then Saturday is the Our Heroes' Dreams Golf Tournament, it's going to be at River Island Country Club up in Springville this year, and they've asked me to come over and offer the invocation for that event, which I am happy to do. And that's all I have to report, Mr. Chair.
That's a pretty short list, thank you. Supervisor Valero.
Well, good morning Tulare County. This past weekend was a very busy weekend in District Four and around Tulare County, and the weather couldn't have been better for getting outside and connecting with our communities. But first, I do want to thank Supervisor Townsend for your leadership on the Corridors Committee meeting that we attended. It was a great meeting, being able to identify projects across Tulare County, and also kudos on a job well done with your emceeing role at the Tulare County Office of Education Excellence in Education Awards as well. For starters, I drove up to the Three Rivers area to participate in the Neighborhood Block Party. This event focused on wildfire and disaster preparedness with food, prizes, and fun. Super excited about the goat grazing project that will include more than 500 goats in and around the Cherokee Oaks community. After that event, I traveled to Exeter where I attended the FoodLink's Harvest Festival. I always enjoy the mission and vision of FoodLink, especially now more than ever. It is my hope that FoodLink will be able to fill the gap during these difficult times where Tulare County families will see the greatest impact. I also drove down the street to the Harvest of Handwoven event, where the handweavers of the Valley Guild has extremely talented individuals. My former high school teacher is in the Guild, and I got to tour the many booths with beautiful garments, yarn, gourds, scarves, and more on display. I didn't know this group existed until Saturday, and it's truly a neat community. I also went to the Dia de los Muertos event put on by the League of Mexican-American Women. This event included mariachi, ballet for el códico dancing, food, and entertainment. Great job to the League for putting on amazing events all year round. Thereafter, I attended the 10-year anniversary of Teen Challenge in the outskirts of Riedley, but in Tulare County. This space is a residential facility aimed at seeing people freed from life-controlling issues through transformation, discipleship, and long-term residential programs. It was a beautiful evening filled with testimonies and community impact. This week includes the following, an Ivanhoe Community Council meeting, our Resource Family Trunk or Treat event, followed by a Badger Community Roundtable midweek, construction kickoff of the HHSA New Behavioral Health Urgent Care Crisis Center. Thank you Natalie Boland for your leadership on that, a much-needed project here in Tulare County. I also have an HHSA Leadership Meeting, and then a Dinuba Women's Club Evening Event. And then on Friday, I will be participating in a few trunk-or-treat events around District Four. And that is all I have, Chair.
All right, Supervisor McCary.
Why, thank you, Mr. Chair, I truly appreciate it.
You're quite welcome, sir.
I really do, thank you. Well, I want to start off this morning by thanking HHSA staff. Again, this is a carryover from last week. They've been working extremely hard on a problem area that we have. Supervisor Townsend, it's in his district, but he's been extremely involved and helpful to do what we can. And it is truly a heartbreaking story, and HHSA, environmental health, behavioral health, everyone's working hard. So thank you. You truly deserve a kudos for what you're doing, because it's an amazing job. So thank you very much, and thank you for keeping us so well-informed. I also attended the Sustainable Corridor Meeting. I met with the UC extension, Cooperative Extension, Lionel Jimenez, we had breakfast, excuse me, had coffee, and it was nice to sit down with him, and he's really wanted to work out with the board and see what we can do to develop a stronger relationship. We've always had a good relationship with him, so it's great to see Lionel reaching out and for us to continue that relationship. I attended the HHSA all-staff. I want to thank Donna for allowing us an opportunity to get up on stage and talk to everybody, and then tell staff how much we truly appreciate them. It's nice, I think they need to hear it from us, because the information that gets put out is not accurate in the slightest bit. So they want to hear it from us, and I'm really glad, and everybody's been great. The letters of support and the phone calls we've gotten from county staff has been amazing. So thank you very much, we truly appreciate that. I went with, on the, I'm sorry, K-T-A side, I went and presented the Centenarian Award to Annabelle Inlo. Annabelle is basically my grandmother, from an extended family, basically. So it was great. She couldn't make it when we did our presentation here, and I went with Bonnie, and we went over there and had a great time, and Annabelle was extremely excited. So we used to play poker with her, and she should just kick our rear. I mean, she was a good poker player. So anyway, Grandma Annabelle, we wish you all the best, and congratulations. Saturday morning was, I started off that day, I teach hunter safety classes, and so we had a class that we taught, and you know, it's just amazing how people don't want to follow statistics. During COVID, they stopped the in-person class, then they tried to make it strictly an online class, and then the statistics went right back up to show hunter-related accidents, including fatalities, on the rise. So this class has been proven to reduce injuries, reduce incidents, and reduce deaths. So I'm glad that we're back to an in-person class, and we're working on it, and it's very well-attended. We have people come from all over California because the classrooms are just so full. And so, I mean, it's just amazing how far these people drive. They'll actually pull up in front of the place and sleep at night in order to get up the next morning to be at the class. I also went to the FoodLink Deepwater Harvest Festival. They're a great partner to work with, and they do provide a lot to our county, so it was a pleasure to go there and support them. Then Saturday evening, I went to the Cash Murder Mystery. It was a fundraiser for the museum there in Exeter, and it was quite an interesting evening. It was a lot of fun, and I look forward to them having more events. After that, I went to the Sheriff's Department, Powell Barn Burner. It's a fundraiser that they do for the Powell Activities League, Police Activities League program, and it was a great time. So we did that. And then yesterday was, I went to the ribbon-cutting for the Farmers' Hill, 198, entrance there to Farmers' Hill, you see all that beautiful landscaping that they've done, and right there by the double ovals there. So it worked out, it was beautiful, and we did a ribbon-cutting. And then yesterday afternoon was East Coia GSA Meeting, and it's just, you know, typical GSA business. We don't like it, it's not pretty, but something has to be done. We've made a lot of strides, a lot of strides, and it seems that we're getting along better with the state. The state's starting to play a little better, so it makes it very nice. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Chucklin.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things I want to highlight from last week. I too want to thank HHSA for their all-staff event. It's pretty incredible to go, first of all, the keynote speaker was great, but what's even greater are the employees from HHSA that are giving their feedback and whatnot on the work that they do. And, you know, we just have exceptional, I don't even want to say employees, I want to say we have exceptional people working throughout the county. So I want to thank all of them for that, and for the staff who put it on. It's quite an event, it's like a big old pep rally. So thank you for that. Friday morning, I did a welcome for the Planning Commissioners, the State Planning Commissioners Conference that was held here in Tulare County, and Supervisor Townsend, they went to Seton Pistachio. I know they took a tour and had some breakout sessions at the Neighborhood Village, Salt and Light Neighborhood Village. So again, thank you also to Mike Washam, Alita, and all the people who were involved in that and bringing those folks to Tulare County. Yesterday morning, I attended a drone demonstration, and it's pretty incredible what drones can do nowadays and how they can assist our first responders. This afternoon, we have a Cemetery Board Meeting here in Chambers, and then I have a Downtown Viselions Property Owners Association Meeting later in the afternoon. Thursday morning, HHSA will have a ribbon-cutting for our Urgent Care, Behavioral Health Urgent Care, that's on the Hillman Campus in Tulare's, and that's a very exciting and much-needed facility. Friday, I will be attending the Imagine You Children's Village Halloween, and Supervisor McCary and I will be dressed this year as Shrek and Fiona. So that should be, yeah, pretty, I'm Shrek, he's Fiona. I knew you were gonna say something, Pete, so I beat you to the punch. I beat you to the punch. And Pete Ashley's gonna come as Donkey. So, no. So that's always, you know, like 1,500 kids come through that, and it's a great event, a safe event, and a big community event. So, and then on Saturday evening, I will be attending the Adventist Health Heart-to-Heart Gala. It's a fundraiser for Adventists to build more heart catheterization labs. So that's it.
All right, thank you, Madam Supervisor. So a few items to go over. I had a busy week personally last week, celebrated my anniversary with my wife. Again, she's tolerated me for 15 years, and I'm very grateful for that. So that was great. And then we came back to town, picked up my kids, and drove to Morgan Hill for a soccer tournament. And we were up there all weekend, and came home with one champion. So my oldest came home with a little medal around his neck, and he was pretty darn proud of himself and happy about that. So that was a worthwhile event for him. But nine soccer games over two days is pretty intense. And then got various meetings this week with constituents and departments, various issues. And then I too will be attending and speaking at the Behavioral Health Facility. It's technically a groundbreaking, but the Hillman Health Facility is rather old, and that ground has been broken a lot. So we're just celebrating the construction of this much-needed facility in Tulare County. It'll be the first of its kind, and it will be right situated in a campus where we provide so many needed services for our residents. And then I also want to encourage everyone to have a safe and healthy Halloween. Remember, this is a very special time, but one to be very alert when you're driving about, and to encourage your children, grandchildren, friends, neighbors to be safe. Very important that the kids get to enjoy this day safe, happy, and healthy, and live on for another year. So with that, that's all I've got, and I want to move on to take up item two. This is a request to present a proclamation recognizing October 13th as National Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day in Tulare County. Supervisor McCary is going to present this, and I believe Rebecca Adam is here to receive the proclamation. So please come forward. And then I don't know, Rebecca, if you have any comments you want to make first before Supervisor McCary presents the proclamation, it's up to you.
I just want to thank you. My mom is a retired Tulare County alumni, so I thank you for proclimating this. I've been working on this for quite some time. I was diagnosed stage four from the very beginning, which is metastatic breast cancer, 12 and a half years ago. I was told locally I actually only had two months to two years to live, and I had an 18-month-old son. Took me a while to get my head out of the, you know, sand and realize I wasn't going to die that fast. And then I ended up becoming a national advocate for metastatic breast cancer, working with a company called MediViver. They are a company that donates 100% of the proceeds towards metastatic breast cancer research. So I really do appreciate this. It's been a long time coming. I know I was a little late this year. It was October 13th, but I still celebrated, and I'm very happy that you guys were able to proclaim it this year. I will be more timely next year.
Thank you. And definitely appreciate your persistence and efforts to spread awareness, very important.
So it gives me a pleasure here to present this proclamation recognizing October 13th, 2025, as Metastatic Breast Cancer Day in Tulare County. Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among women with metastatic breast cancer, MBC, responsible for approximately 98% of all breast cancer-related deaths. And whereas, despite advances in early detection and treatment, approximately 30% of early-stage breast cancers will eventually metastasize, and there is currently no known cure for MBC. And whereas, significant racial disparities persist in breast cancer outcomes. Black women face a 40% higher mortality rate than white women, and breast cancer is a leading cause of cancer death among Hispanic women. Highlighting the urgent need for more research, equitable healthcare access, and culturally-inclusive education and support. Whereas, in 2025, an estimated 42,680 Americans and 685,000 people worldwide will die from metastatic breast cancer. Yet less than 13% of breast cancer research funding is dedicated to MBC, limiting treatment options. And whereas, increased research, funding, and awareness are critical to transforming metastatic breast cancer from a terminal diagnosis into a manageable condition that offers patients hope and extended life. And whereas, healthcare providers, advocacy organizations, caregivers, survivors, and the broader community recognize the importance of education, advocacy, research, and compassionate care for those affected by the metastatic breast cancer. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize October 13th, 2025, as Metastatic Breast Cancer Day in Tulare County, and calls upon all citizens to increase awareness, support research initiatives, and demonstrate compassion towards those impacted by this disease. It's dated today, October 28th, 2025. Signed by myself, Larry McCary, Chairman Supervisor Pete Vanderpoel, Vice Chair Supervisor Amy Schucklin, Supervisor Eddie Valero, and Supervisor Dennis Townsend. Thank you.
We'll be lighting up next year, hopefully lighting up the city.
Okay, thank you for that again, and we are now going to move on and take up item three. This is a presentation given by Paul Yoder with Shaw, Yoder, Antwi, Schmelzer, and Lang regarding an update on state legislation. Hopefully, this isn't as long as the list of bills in the legislature this year.
It'll be a little shorter than that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, board members, members of the public. I've asked my colleague Dylan Elliott to join me today, I hope that's all right. One of the star lobbyists in the firm these days. So we are done with the 2025 legislative year, and when I say done, I mean the governor, we're even through the bill action period, where governor had, I think, about 800, 900 bills on his desk and acted on those. The governor got one extra day this year. You get 30 days after the legislature's gone to act on bills. He got one extra day because the legislature stayed one extra day, and so we weren't done until actually October 13th. Before I hand it over to Dylan to go through some of the sort of big-ticket things that the legislature and the governor actually accomplished this year, I want to say that, you know, that 800 or 900 bills that got to the governor, the veto rate was a little over 13%. That's a historically low number. We usually expect 15, 16, 17. Arnold Schwarzenegger, in his first year of governor, vetoed over a quarter of the bills that went to him. That was spicy, that year was spicy, that was definitely, the legislature was definitely not used to that. But 13% is relatively low. That's partly because a lot of people, a lot of authors, I should say, knew that they probably shouldn't send their bill to the governor this year, that their bills weren't cooked or ready, if you will. But regardless, 13% of the total amount of bills vetoed, it's not that much. And I really want to emphasize, we'll talk about it a little bit later, that's why our firm works so hard to keep bills that you oppose from getting to the governor's desk in the first place. And so, having said all that, let me hand it over to Dylan to talk about the bigger things that they did this year.
Thanks, Paul. Good morning Supervisors, appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today. Paul had mentioned the governor got an extra day to sign our veto bills. Part of the reason that was is the big-ticket items took a really long time to land this year. It's not abnormal to see the legislature and the governor have a long negotiation process. Quite literally, some of the proposals that I'm going to explain right now did not go into print until, obviously, 72 hours before the end of session, but what we would have expected to be the final day bills would go into print almost into the early morning thereafter, highlighting the fact that there was a lot on the table for them to discuss this year. The priority that the legislature said they wanted to address for Californians was affordability. Obviously, we've seen prices increase across the board in a lot of places. The first way that they were trying to do that was in the energy and affordability space. First bill I'd highlight is SB 237, you may already be aware of it. This is the bill that's going to streamline increased oil production in Kern County. There is a lot of concern about rising gas prices. The legislature and the governor have made it clear with this that they want to insulate the state of California and Californians from the harms that they could see at increased price at the pump. That bill is now law, goes into effect January 1st. We should see lower gas prices as a result of that bill in years to come. The other bill that I would highlight on this would be the extension of CAP and Trade. It's now called CAP and Invest. This is the state's program for cost-sharing across organizations that have climate polluters. They can now buy into a system. We were seeing some decrease in the market. Governor made it a priority to try to get legislature to agree to extending that program. In doing so, there's dedicated money for high-speed rail, which there already was, but now some additional money towards wildfire, and the legislature will have the opportunity to further negotiate in the years to come how they want to spend some of the money that's generated out of that program. Additionally, the state now is going to be able to join a Western Regional Energy Sharing effort. We're calling it grid regionalization, means other states that have energy production, you know, we have to turn the lights off during hotter months, we can borrow now energy from other states. When we're in quieter periods, we can share some of the energy that's generated in California with other states, again, trying to reduce that affordability. And finally, wildfire fund was significantly depleted. Obviously, we saw a huge wildfire, two large wildfires in Los Angeles County this year. Legislature and the governor have authorized $18 billion, $9 billion paid by ratepayers, $9 billion paid by the for-profit electrical companies to replenish that for future wildfire insulation. And the last issue, Proposition 4, many saw on their ballot, passed last year, was the $10 billion Climate Natural Resources Bond. They authorized about a third of that across the board. The numbers specifically are $1.2 billion for water, safe drinking water, $400 million for wildfire resilience, $100 million for extreme heat mitigation, and a handful of other spaces. We expect that monies should become available to local jurisdictions and others within the next year. We will certainly keep the county apprised once we see any of those opportunities for funding coming out. Again, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thanks, Dylan. So looking forward a little bit before we take some questions, obviously, we've got an election upcoming, and it's not just about the one thing that's on the ballot. I think, you know, depending on what happens to that measure, who shows up, who doesn't, I think you're going to see both parties in California, you know, interpret those results. And we are going ahead to 2026, which is a statewide ballot year. You may not believe, I think especially the public might not believe all of the different proposals that may hit the statewide ballot next November. Everything from a voter ID requirement in California, that already has a couple hundred thousand signatures, one measure to increase homeownership in California, to create a $20 billion-plus program for first-time homebuyers to get into their houses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We already have one proposal in the legislature, Senate Bill 607, that was amended in the, I think, the last week of the legislative year. That proposes another $20 billion-plus bond for research and development in California, starting with the UCs, the CSUs, but also for other entities that would be able to apply to that. You can't sell $40 billion in bonds just like that in California. The debt service would be enormous. And so, one of the things we want to point out is, when you see in the news that these initiatives are not only proposed, but they're gaining steam, keep in mind that at some point, there's probably going to be a sorting-out process for that. And what I mean by that is, our constitution allows proponents to withdraw initiatives by early June. What has to happen is the three, two or three leading proponents of the initiative have to sign, and they have to attest to the California Secretary of State that they want to withdraw their initiative. So there is a lot in play right now, but, you know, we got a couple months before that all shakes out. I mentioned, we talked about, I want to talk about going on defense and offense before we take questions. In terms of defense, our firm's very proud of what we did this year on several bills that were opposed by a lot of counties, especially in the Central Valley. AB 470, the so-called caller of last resort bill, that would have allowed AT&amp;T and others to pull out the copper landlines, that was stalled. And that was stalled after frankly, all the statewide associations that represent counties withdrew their opposition. When they did that, that sort of put us as the lead dog, lead dogs, if you will, in the pack. And we took that on willingly, and happy to say the bills like AB 470 were stalled and didn't get to the governor this year. And then, you know, I'm sorry that the Tulie GSA bills, plural, didn't get to the governor. I'm going to say yet. I think we're still hopeful about what we can do early next year. And then on the cemetery issue, we are in conversations with the California Special Districts Association, and they've actually been fruitful. They really have. And I'm encouraged that we can get a bill introduced next year, and a bill that maybe the Special Districts Association doesn't oppose. I don't know if we can get them to support it, but maybe one that they won't oppose, and one that we can get through the legislature, not just for Tulare County, but statewide, for statewide public policy. And I think you're going to be a leader in that in 2026. So thank you for letting us present to you today, and we're happy to take any questions.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Paul? Supervisor Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Paul and Dylan, for coming and making the presentation. Dylan, you had mentioned on the new CAP and Invest, one of the ways, one of the places that money will go to is some wildfire funds. Do you know how that specifically will be distributed? Is that grants, or is that some kind of formulary distribution?
Yeah, so I think the plan as of now, at least the discussions, were to have that money go to CAL FIRE. Part of the, there was another bill, you know, could spend more time on it, but SB 581 would have extended some seasonal firefighters to full-time. That policy, or a form of that policy, was moved into the budget. What we can anticipate is seeing further discussion on things like that, and with CAP and Trade going forward, of how the legislature wants to use the money that's in CAP and Trade to push back on the growing wildfire threat we're seeing in the state. There isn't a full, formalized plan that's within it. Frankly, part of the discussion was allowing for the legislature to continue looking at how those funds could be best spent. So I don't have a great answer for you on that, but I think it's something we'll find out probably within the next year.
But it sounds like pretty much going directly to CAL FIRE.
But it sounds, it sounds like pretty much going directly to CAL FIRE for the work that they do.
I think it's fair to expect that, but if that changes, certainly would, you know, let y'all know.
And I, I'll add that, you know, on, on funds like that, the state doesn't need to reinvent the wheel. There are, there are a lot of pots and, you know, previous NOFA's and RFPs for the Public Notice of Funding Availability is NOFA. NOFA's and RFPs that have gone out in previous years, recent, previous years, and the state, you know, can put the money through there and get it out quickly. Yeah, so we're hopeful about that.
Okay, good. And if you don't, if you don't mind one more question?
I do mind, but go ahead.
I shouldn't have even asked. Also, on the, on the drinking water, kind of the same, same question on that, I think you said that was through a bond?
Yeah.
How about that? How does that distribution work? Is that grants?
Yeah, so we're waiting for the state for some guidance on that. That should, there was some, in the budget action that authorized the borrowing of that money for the bond, there was some directed funding towards specific projects, but I think what we're anticipating is going to be a grant opportunity where NOFA's will go out. They haven't gone out yet, probably going to see that in the next six months.
Okay, all right.
And that should be available to counties.
Okay, so be available to counties. How about GSAs? Do you think GSAs would be able to?
Think it would depend on what the effort of the GSA was, what was trying to be implemented. There isn't money in there that is specific for Sigma, for example, but I think if there were particular projects that a GSA was trying to move forward with, that reasonably, they could make an application effort.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thanks.
All right, next is Supervisor McCary.
Well, Paul and Dylan, thank you. You're nothing but an asset to us. You really are. I mean, you're always available to us, and you bring us the most information so we can make a good, informed decision. So, I truly appreciate that. I think some of the questions I have is regarding the, the bonds that we're talking about, you know, it's debt, debt, and more debt the state keeps trying to pursue. Is CSAC, or is any other, the larger associations looking at taking a stand? Do we know what we have?
I don't know that they are. We can inquire and have the conversation with them. I, I want to make sure I mention, you know, since, especially, especially since you asked that question, for the public's benefit, the current cost, if you will, of bond money, there's a cost to borrow, there's a cost to issue those bonds. And the current cost, as far as we're aware, is four hundred million dollars over the life of the bond for every billion that the voters approve. So, you prove a four, excuse me, a ten billion bond, at some point, you know, you're talking a lot of money. Where does that money come from? It comes out of the state's general fund. That means it crowds out programs, and the programs that you, you, you oversee, the programs, the money that comes to the counties. And so, I think at some point, it is fair for CSAC and the other state associations to say, hey, wait a minute, what are we doing to the state's general fund? There needs to be a balance here. We are, can I, Supervisor, run through the chair? The, the rate that most folks advise that no state should exceed is your bond debt should never exceed over six percent of your state general fund. Is everybody with me? You shouldn't, right? Your bond debt should not be more than six percent of your overall state general fund. The state's general fund has grown, as you know, and so, we're not close to that six percent right now. We were about twenty years ago, but we're not as, we're not super close to that right now. So, I do, you know, I want to answer the question as thoroughly as I can.
No, no, and I appreciate that. It just seems that we're losing more and more programs and funding for it, and then just to incur more debt. And who pays? We all pay. Every one of us in this room, I don't care who you are, that we pay through our taxes. So, it's very unfortunate. And we try to explain to people that, that they want to, they want to politicize it. That's not the case. The case is, is that the states pass through for all the funding we get, and when they do these things, that means less money to us and less money to our program. So, I, I really appreciate that very much.
One footnote, on that first-time homebuyers bond, I should note that the, that is viewed as being a sort of revolving fund. And so, the bonds would get floated out of the gate, but then they would slowly but surely get repaid as families, individuals get into those homes and start repaying. That is, that one, I, I just want to clarify, that wouldn't be a traditional general obligation bond, like some of the other ones. It would be, it's envisioned as a revolving fund.
And, and finally, I know Israel's been in contact with me regarding the, the meeting on the cemetery and the legislation we're putting up, and I, having three boards in my district that have been, could be described as nothing better than disasters, I'm very interested in it. And so, anything that comes up, I know Israel's got me, but please call me, because I do want to be involved. It is a horrendous problem that we need to fix.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor.
All right, Supervisor Struckley.
Yeah, Paul, you had mentioned that the, a lot of the associations pulled out from the caller of last resort. Can you tell me why that happened?
You know, they requested amendments, and AT&amp;T and the other carriers agreed to amend their bill. You know, I, I don't mean to say that they did that like willy-nilly, right? They, they said, we'd like this set of amendments. And I, I think, in fairness, a lot of the amendments were taken. You know, but the bill was, still would have been just horrific for the more rural parts, and especially even some suburban parts of California. And so, so I, you know, it, it's easy to criticize, and, you know, I, I just want to be factual about it, though. I, I think that bill should have been opposed, even in its form, you know, as we stand here today, it, it merits county opposition. So, appreciate the question. Yeah, it happens in Sacramento, it does.
All right, Supervisor Valerio.
All right. The question that I have for you is more tailored towards forecasting. And so, forecasting ahead, maybe for next year, what do you feel is the temperature of the legislature and the governor's office into 2026? And would there be a focus more, less on policy, more on politics, i.e. midterms? What, what, give us a picture of what 2026 would look like.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And so, it will be Governor Newsom's last year as governor. And so, that mix of politics with policy, you know, people like to use the term lame duck. I don't know how lame that duck will be on his way out the door. I, I think he, he wants to be all the governor he can be until the very last day. But, but you are going to see a legislature, and we're going to have a new Senate pro temp, a new leader of the Senate, I should note that for the public's benefit, November seventeenth. Senator Monique Lamon from Santa Barbara, she will install her new committee chairs and have her own team. And so, she'll really be the one negotiating with the governor next year, not Senator Mike McGuire, the outgoing pro temp. I think you're going to see, though, a very spunky legislature. I don't know that we're going to see a legislature so spunky that they think about a veto override, for example, which we still haven't, we haven't had one since Jerry Brown's first term in office, not the second go-around, the first time Jerry Brown was in office. So, it's been a really long time. But they have the numbers to override the governor if they want to do. And then, the fiscal situation is not great. When the governor proposes his last budget in, in early January, he's probably going to have to admit that the state has another, you know, ten billion-dollar-plus deficit that it needs to address, a lot of ramifications from recent federal legislation that the state is going to have to grapple with. And so, it's going to be volatile. It's, it's, next year is going to be a, and you have all these legislators, not all of them, but every member of the Assembly running for reelection, and probably, what, ten, fifteen members of the state senate running for reelection. You throw all that into the, into the, into the pot, and I think we're just all going to have to buckle up every day, honestly. I mean, I think 2026 is going to be a challenge for all of us. I do.
And then, another quick question, which is artificial intelligence, and I know that that is something that is around us, in front of us, and impacting business, education, any sector, every sector. Are there any kind of potential bills in place in the near future to address some of the impacts that we're seeing with artificial intelligence?
Yeah, absolutely. So, now's as good a time as any to admit to you all that Dylan's actually a robot. No, I, you know, putting that technology to use, no, I'm kidding, buddy. Thanks for being a good sport. She can't crack all the jokes. Yeah. I'll tell you the, one of the big, the example that comes to mind is, you know, AI sort of as the, the, the utility on the internet now for people who, for example, kids that are having severe behavioral health problems. And some of the advice that they're getting from chatbots that are, you know, again, informed by AI, you're going to see, in fact, you have chatbots that are calling themselves doctor. And that's legislation that we're seeing is, that should not, that's not right, right? An actual physician is an actual physician. I, I would just say AI, especially to the extent it's, it is powering the internet and the searches that people do, and the, the answers that they're getting back, that's really where we're seeing the legislature want to weigh in. Increased parental controls, you know, no cellphones in school, that's not really a, you know, technology advanced, and so, a reaction to it, but it's still a reaction to technology that existed already. We're seeing the legislature act on that. So, it's, it's, there's a lot of legislators that want to be very active in this, in this space, because they're, they're fearful of it, honestly. The governor, not so much so. You know, the governor would say he's a, probably, he's appropriately concerned, but I think, you know, you have a majority of legislators who are probably more concerned on this issue, and they're going to keep pushing legislation. Yeah, of course.
Supervisor, and I will follow up with you afterwards, forgive me for not remembering the bill number. Senator Scott Wiener had a bill this year. He tried last year, a similar effort that was vetoed by the governor. Governor basically said, please come back to the table, this is an important issue. This year, Senator Wiener worked with a lot of the AI companies, a lot of Silicon Valley, and really created sort of a partnership bill with them that will do some self-governance of AI development. The governor put out a really strong press release on it, basically saying, we believe that California is re, you know, incentivizing technology development. Be interesting to see what happens next year with the AI discussion now that that bill has been signed into law. But it was one that was really worked out in an effort towards state agreement with a lot of those tech companies. And I think a lot of the, the examples that Paul just mentioned, maybe what we see more of bills next year focused on how AI is applied to very specific avenues. This one's going to be sort of the, the grand starting place as the technology further develops.
One more? This one is in regards to in-home supportive services. And I know that Assemblymember Haney had a bill that did not go through. And my frustration has always been that we're, we're the middle person, right? Or, or we have to piecemeal a lot of things where it's half-state, half-county. And ideally, it should be the state making those negotiations with IHSS. But is there anything that you see in the future that will help solve the issue that is such a consternation with both state and county with regards to IHSS?
I, I don't, I don't see it in 2026. I, I think the, the minute they're back on January fifth, which reminds me of something I'd come back to real quickly, when they come back, they're going to probably start dealing with healthcare and how the state is going to respond, or what the state can actually do, given its current fiscal situation, starting with folks in California who get their health insurance through the exchange, right? And get private insurance through the Health Insurance Exchange, but also Medi-Cal. They're going to have to work on that. And social services also, to be sure, I think honestly, we may see realignment, the nineteen ninety-one realignment reopened. And when I, you know, when I said next year is going to be a challenge to all of us, it's really what's in my head is, is what, what are the legislation the governor going to do on health, you know, starting with healthcare? I don't know that on IHSS, I don't want to say that it's not the year that, that bargaining goes back to the state, because it could be. It could be. It could be. But there are all those other challenges, and I think those challenges are going to have to be dealt with first, Supervisor. Yeah.
For me, it just, it's frustrating, right? When one county is doing one thing, another county is doing another thing, and there's no consistency, there's no across-the-board cohesiveness on this issue, and so, it's very frustrating for me.
Mr. Chair, the thing I said, I wanted to come back very, very briefly. I want to remind the public especially, we have two-year legislative cycles. We're going, we ended the first, we're going into the second. I mention that just because if there was a bill you were aware of, and you, you were very concerned about that bill, or you liked the bill, that, that bill, even though it may have stalled, it could, if it's, especially if it's all the way through the process, it was introduced in the Assembly, got all the way to the Senate floor, right? And maybe you get a newsletter, maybe you get emails, and, you know, you hear or you see, oh, that bill stalled. The minute they come back and meet on the floor, the respective floors, in January, all it takes is one procedural motion, and to wait a couple of days, and then take the bill up and send it to the governor. That doesn't happen in the first year. We don't, in January of the first year, we don't worry about bills going to the governor. But January of the second year, I would just say it one more time, the minute they're back, the minute they reconvene, bills that are in the second house that have been all the way through the process, they can go to the governor. And so, that, that means we have to step up our vigilance, and we're obviously aware of that. But again, for the, you know, for the public as well, I want to make sure we mention that today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Townsend, you wanted to ask another question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just had one more. Sierra San Joaquin Jobs Initiative, or the S two J two, set in on several of those meetings, and sort of looks like just cover the valley with solar panels.
Right.
It's kind of the idea. Can you comment on that, on the, where that's going, how you, how you think it's going to play out?
I, I think we're aware of it, and I think, I, I think there are, you got to be, you got to be careful, you got to be cautious. I think the biggest thing for me, Supervisor, is how much of that power that's generated, right, through the solar panels, really accrues to the benefit of folks in the valley? And what I mean is, do you, do you just, do you, do you let the sun come down and take that energy and then ship it to LA and San Francisco? Or do you keep it here locally, and do you have lower rates, especially in the valley, right? Where, you know, depending on, you know, PG&E, so Cal Edison, you know, I think either way in the summer, we all know you hit those upper tier, upper tiers, it's brutal. It's brutal. And so, the biggest question for me is, if it's going to happen, to what extent does it accrue to the benefits, you know, the citizens, the actual citizens of Tulare County and, and the valley at large?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that point. So, few items now for me. I'll let everyone else go first, but I have a few things I want to cover as well. So, the parental rights conversation that you started when talking about AI, you know, I really appreciate the interest of the legislature to look at regulating how much technology, social media, all of that can intrude upon the lives of children. However, I want to make sure that I am clear in saying, I don't endorse Sacramento being parents of my children. I am the parent. I want to be a parent to my children. I'm a present parent, an involved parent, and I don't want Sacramento to assume that for every child who doesn't have that, Sacramento needs to step in with policies that apply to all. I know there were some efforts this year to redefine who could be a parent or a guardian for different children. That was, that's scary to me. I don't want someone to be able to be proclaimed a guardian of my child. I'm the guardian. So, so that's pretty damn scary to me. I hope that they can stick to limiting and controlling those that influence overwhelmingly our children versus controlling what we as parents or what others can do to influence and control what our children can do. So, I want to make that point very clear. Redistricting, I know that there's the proposition that's coming, performance, and I think one thing that really, really frustrates me is, what created the redistricting process that we have in California currently? It was a proposition.
It, it was, and it, you know, I'm frustrated on this just because people don't go all the way back. The, the idea started with former state Senator Abel Maldonado, right? And it was one of the things that he asked of Senator, excuse me, of then-Governor Schwarzenegger, if I remember that part right. And, and the idea was, we should, the legislature should not draw its own lines. And so, we should have this independent redistricting commission. What does independent mean? And, you know, that was, there was a lot to work through on that, but, but that was, that was the impetus, was. And I'm not saying former Senator Abel Maldonado came up with the idea. I think the idea was out there, and Senator Maldonado said, you know, we should do this.
So, so my, my response is, so it was the voters of California that approved that process and, and put their stamp of approval, hey, let's do this, we agree, this is the right way to go. And then all of a sudden, when, you know, the governor gets interested in the national political game, hey, well, you know, we'll send it back to the voters and we're going to get power back in the legislature's hands. So I just have real issues with that. And, and the whole proposition process, you know, you mentioned all these different bonds and proposals that are sponsored by different organizations that are already potentially going to be hitting us in 2026. Well, you know, it doesn't really matter, they'll just, you know, it can be, you know, thrown right back out there to, to be redone again and again and again. It's just a vicious cycle and it's, it's frustrating to me.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure.
I just want to remind everybody, the voter said yes twice.
Yeah.
They said yes to independent redistricting for legislative seats and then they later said yes to independent redistricting for congressional seats.
Correct.
So they said yes twice.
Twice. Thank you. And so 2026 is going to be very interesting. It is an election year. It will be very political. Interesting to see who ends up being either appointed governor or elected governor, because I'm, I'm hearing a lot of different things that are possibilities. So that's going to be an interesting thing to see how that shakes out. I, I think that there's a lot of unknowns still there right now. And in the state of California, there's over 2,000 bills that hit the legislature every year. And the fact that 900 make it to the governor's desk, 900 or so, make it to the governor's desk, and there's only a 13% veto rate, that means that if there's a bill that's introduced, it's got a high propensity to become law. And if we don't do the work that we do through you and through our organizations that we are a part of, I mean, we're facing these laws from the start. So it's a really scary process, but it's also showing and highlighting why it's so important to have a respected advocate like yourselves or being a part of various associations that are fighting for our interests up there in Sacramento. Because I think that there's a lot of, you sit there and ask, how can life get any better in the state of California than it is today through, you know, 2,000 pieces of new legislation? And it's just scary to see how our lives can continue to change. But that being said, I do appreciate the special district bill that has been going through the process. That was an idea that I think started here with this board and our staff is working really hard and working with you, with the Special District Association to get a favorable or a, we won't oppose this position, because we see the impact that these special districts have on our constituents when they can't function because of an inability to operate within the constraints of special, special district law as it currently stands. So I think that that's a real opportunity for us. I'm happy to do whatever we need to do as Tulare County Supervisors to make sure that gets across the finish line, because I think that'll have a tremendous impact, not only on Tulare County, but throughout the whole state of California and special districts that represent the same constituency that we do. Do you have a question?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I'd like to ask Paul, I'm kind of tagging on Supervisor Valero about 2026. I don't want to put you on the spot and I know I don't have a crystal ball, but I do think it's an important topic. What do you, how, because this is sort of in response to HR1. How do you think the state legislature is going to deal with indigent healthcare, if at all?
Well, I, I don't mind being put on the spot. That's the question everybody's asking around the state. In county land, I think the state first and foremost is going, I mentioned the insurance exchange. You have, you have people on insurance, people that have it and have it at a decent price. Not a perfect price, but a decent price. I think you're going to see the governor and legislature try to not make things worse, right? And so hopefully people can stay on the exchange and still enjoy policies that they can afford. That's how I will, I will put it. Then you get to Medi-Cal and you have three options. You can limit benefits, you can limit eligibility, or you can limit both. And I think at the end of the day, limiting benefits almost has to happen. There's just no way, the math doesn't math if the legislature and the governor don't agree to reining in benefits. On the issue of eligibility, that's going to be the hardest thing of all. And there are a lot of members of the legislature that they want to keep eligibility for Medi-Cal right where it is. For the public's benefit, to your question, government code 17,000 says that counties are ultimately responsible for indigent health, right, for individuals. It is not crystal clear, as far as I know, talking to the lawyers around the state, how broadly that can be interpreted. And so I think you're going to see the tussle in the legislature. And then depending on what they do, we're probably going to see some lawsuits. And then the courts will start to sort through this and it may be a back and forth, if you will, between a legal decision and then coming, bringing it back to the, the next legislature. Everybody's with me? So we may not get it settled on day one and we may not get it really settled, settled, right? To where you can say for the next five years, 10 years is what we got to do. We may not have it settled on day one, even though a bill has been signed by the governor, we may not have it settled on day 180. We may not have it really sorted out and settled, I'll say, sort of, you know, for the time being. You know, it may go a full year before legal challenges have worked themselves out and we see how the, the next legislature and the next, and the next governor respond to it. So I, I know that's, that was a stem winder of an answer, but that's how it's, that's really how we see things working. It won't, it's not going to be like that. Counties, these, here's your expectation, period, without a legal challenge. I just, it's really hard for me to imagine that.
I guess ultimately, my point was, they're probably going to look to counties to take some of that back.
Absolutely.
And that is the...
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And that's one of the things that was in my head when I said next year is going to challenge all of us.
Well, thanks for that rosy outlook and presentation.
His fault.
I really do appreciate that, but no, thank you. Thank you for the work that you do on behalf of Tulare County and, and all of the counties that you represent. Really do appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Board.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on and take up item four. This is public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment to the Board of Supervisors regarding any item that's within our jurisdiction that is not on today's agenda. Public comment can only be limited to three minutes per speaker for a total of 15 minutes. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the board under general public comment?
I have no public comment cards for number four.
I will then close public comment and we will continue on. Oh, wait. Oh, I'm sorry. If, if we do have general public comment, okay. Well, you know what? Boy, you, the office spoke for itself, so go ahead and come on up.
You're going to make me follow the state. Apologies, I just turned in a card and I still want to miss my opportunity to talk to you all. Buenos dias. My name is Rosalinda Verde Alexander and I'm proud to be in front of you. Good morning, Townsend, McCary, Valero, Shucklin, Abanderpoole, Council. My, my name is Rosalinda Verde Alexander and I'm a native Visalian. I'm a very proud Central Valley girl, so much so that I decided to start a nonprofit organization here dedicated to helping artists with disabilities get a start in the arts. We do this by producing mariachi concerts, operas, original plays, YouTube videos and live performances, all with the goal of giving our artists purpose, creative expression, and to help stimulate an artist economy in the Central Valley. In 2020, during the lockdown, my friends, actors, students, we were searching for a way to deal with the isolation of COVID. Out of that, we established a magical TV show called The Magic Treehouse at Camp Alexander. We played outside in my treehouse and from that spark, an idea grew into something much bigger. And I'm here today as my character on the show, Rosalinda Alexander. You, our supervisors, have supported this vision of helping people with disabilities in the arts. For that, I am so deeply grateful. On behalf of the Green Rose Productions Board and our students, we thank you for the generous grant that you gave us, proving your faith in what we do. You have truly helped put the wind beneath our wings and I'm here before you to say thank you. As a token of our appreciation, I would like to personally invite you to our Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead celebration on November 1st, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Visalia Cemetery at 1300 West Goshen Avenue. We've added a band, so from 2:00 to 3:00, Subale, a cumbia band out of Fresno is coming to host a mini dance. They play cumbia, salsa, and English songs, so bring your kids, get your faces painted, paint some sugar skulls, and visit our vendors before we invite the ancestors to join us. The ceremony will be hosted by myself as La Catrina. Our GRP troupe will be performing and we have several other artists lending their talents. Our focus is to celebrate the people that have passed on to the old wild yonder. And if your heart is open, you will surely see the signs in serendipitous occurrences after you attend. If this holiday is new to you, it is a celebration of life using art and color to help us mourn and also be happy for those have, who have continued on to their next journey. Thank you, supervisors, for your time and for all that you do for this county. I hope we see you out there with a picture of your loved ones. Por la comunidad, GRP invitan a toda la comunidad a nuestro baile en el cementerio de Visalia, a las 2 de la tarde, el primer sábado de noviembre. Vamos a tener una ceremonia donde vamos... Thank you for your time. Everybody's invited. Check us out, greenroseproductions.org. I have two posters to leave with you.
Thank you, Rosalinda. Any additional public comments that I might have missed? I will close public comment, but go ahead, Supervisor Shucklin.
Mr. Chair, kind of segueing off that, something I forgot to mention earlier. If you look around the room, in the back of the room and in, in our lobby, we have some new public art hung this last week, so I encourage folks, there's QR codes, it's a local artist photographer who has graced our walls, so I just want to mention that and have folks take a look at that.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will now take up our consent calendar, items five through 24. I do know that on item nine, Supervisor Shucklin did not spell one of the appointees' names correctly. Appointee Kevin Yahnian should be spelled Y-A-H-N-I-A-N instead of what's listed in the agenda. Any other corrections by board members, staff, or members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move, approve, second.
Got a quick motion, a quick second from the same people. Supervisor Townsend gets the motion, Supervisor Shucklin gets the second. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move on and we are going to take up our untimed portion of our meeting today. This is a request from, this is item 25, a request from the Solid Waste Department to introduce an ordinance adding Article 14 to Chapter 3 of Part 4 of the Ordinance Code pertaining to bear-resistant carts and enclosures. And I'm going to let you read some of it, Bryce, otherwise I'll read your whole presentation for you. Go ahead. This is a long agenda item here, right? See that list? I just read the first sentence.
We are here this, this morning to present a proposed ordinance change related to bear-resistant carts and containers. Currently, bear-resistant trash carts and containers are available to customers through our franchise hauler. However, they are not required. The proposed ordinance change would make them mandatory within a designated bear management Implementation of this requirement will occur in two steps. Step one, today's request, the ordinance before you today would require your franchise haulers to provide a bear-resistant trash cart and containers within any area that has been designated by this board as a bear management zone. Step two would be the actual physical adoption of this ordinance, but also would be when your board would designate a bear management zone. That'll happen at a future meeting, more likely on November 18th. It's important to note that this requirement applies only to trash carts and containers. Recycling and green waste carts and containers will not be required to be bear resistant. The rates for the bear-resistant carts and containers are already been established in your current franchise agreement. Residential customers will be charged an additional $12 per month. Commercial customers will be charged an additional 10% above their existing rate. The ordinance would take effect on April 1st, 2026. What the ordinance won't do... What the ordinance won't do is mandate residents to subscribe to service, still optional service. It will not mandate short-term rentals to subscribe to service. And it won't provide enforcement of properties that are not on service. Is this the video? Okay.
The Toter Automated Bear Cart. Human bear conflict is a growing problem as bears enter populated areas to scavenge for food. Toter's Automated Bear Cart provides a durable, secure solution to help prevent bears from gaining access to trash while keeping humans safe. The Toter Bear Cart features an all-new design to help prevent bears from chewing or clawing their way into the container. The carts are compatible with automated grabber-style refuse trucks and semi-automated trucks, so the locking mechanism will open automatically when tipped for emptying. The ergonomic locking mechanism allows containers to be opened with one hand, but recessed to help prevent bears from opening. The rugged rim provides added durability. The beefier handle is separated from the hinge to help prevent access from repeated clawing and chewing. Plus, the bear cart is backed by a five-year limited warranty. The Toter Automated Bear Cart.
Staff request that the board take the following actions.
Bryce, real quick, before you leave that, that was a great video and nice, you know, to actually see what the cart is going to be. Who pays for that cart? Are residents, customers hit with a one-time, you know, $500 cost? Or is this something that is paid for by the hauler in that area and recouped through the rates paid going forward?
The second. So, the $12 per month is that fee to help recoup that cost?
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a question also, if I may. So what is the cost of that cart?
Brand new?
Yeah.
They're around $250.
So the $12 is only going to, it's only going to be paid until that $250 is recouped?
No, I, no. That's not the way the current agreement is set up, or the ordinance.
Okay. Does this, obviously from that video, because it was a question I was going to ask, this does not require any additional work to, it's the same as picking up any cart and dumping it. Nobody has to get out and do anything to the cart. It automatically dumps it.
Correct.
Okay. I have issue with that, that it's no different than a regular cart dumping it, yet if you want this cart, you have to pay $12 a month more in perpetuity rather than just for the cost of the cart. So just wanted to...
All right, Supervisor Valero?
Yes, that is the same concern that I do have as well. When I looked at that and noticed that it was in perpetuity, that is something that is a non-starter for me as well, given the fact that if they've already paid for the bin, why should they keep paying that same amount ongoing? And so, again, that's just an issue that I have as well.
Supervisor McCary?
So, and I understand the concern. However, there's ongoing maintenance on these, right? There's going to be, if the locks break or something happens to the lock and it's not working properly, you're going to have to maintain that. You're going to have to, if a bear chews up on it, you're going to have to replace the cart, additional cost. So that $12, while it's not going to be a one-time cost for, for a can, it's going to be continual maintenance and, and continue that it works. Is that, am I understanding correct on that?
That's, that's correct. The, I'm sure there's a warranty of some sort on them, but not, probably not sufficient...
But if a bear chews it up or somebody hits it with a car, runs it over, if it's along the street or drive, and it gets, and they got to have to replace it, they're not going to charge an extra amount. That $12 is going to continue to maintain it and continue it going. I mean, we see that in, in service agreements all the time with what we do. I don't like it, but that's what we have. So I'm just concerned that, and we do a contract, and we just did, what, a 15-year contract?
Is a 15-year contract.
Right, we just did a 15-year contract that took all this into consideration. So, you know, and so we own that contract. I don't think we can go back and make amendments on it at this point, but if it's going to involve continuous maintenance, and I'm not saying every day, but there's going to be some expense to send somebody up to fix a can, to bring the, the broken one down to fix it. So there is an additional cost to this.
Okay, Supervisor Shucklin?
Yeah, my service through the city of Visalia, I recently had two cans replaced because, you know, I'm sure from the constant banging and whatnot of the cans, they were cracked, wheels are broken, hinges can break, yet I pay the same amount and, and they get, they get replaced.
All right. But you don't have bears. But you don't have bears. Go ahead and finish your agenda item.
I could.
Your presentation.
Thank you. Staff request that the board take the following actions. Introduce an ordinance adding Article 14 to Chapter 3 of Part 4 of the Ordinance Code pertaining to bear resistant carts and enclosures. Find that the title of the ordinance was included on the published agenda and that a copy of the full ordinance was made available to the public, online and in print, at the meeting before the ordinance was introduced. Set an adoption of the ordinance for November 18th. Direct the clerk of the board to publish a summary of the ordinance before the adoption as required by law. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, so at this time, we will take up public comment. I do want to note, Madam Clerk, I believe you might have received one or two emails, is that correct? That you want to be part of the public record?
Yes, we received several, actually.
Oh, okay, so that's that big stack of paper you have, okay. So, those will all be part of the public record and you can disseminate that to the board at this time if you'd like.
Yes, I will do that.
And then, we will also be taking up public comment at this time, so if you would like to speak before the board, please come forward, state your name for the record, and public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker. If you agree with a previous speaker, please do not come up and be repetitive. I want to make sure we give adequate time for people to comment. Normally, public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes, but I understand there are a few residents who would like to make comments, and I also believe the hauler is here as well, who can make comments as well. So, go ahead, Madam Clerk, and you can read off the names who have requested to speak.
Yes, we have Elizabeth Holliday.
My name is Elizabeth Holliday, and I'm a proud 13-year resident of Three Rivers and a former small business owner in Three Rivers. I'm here this morning to ask you to please vote no on the inadequate proposed ordinance, and start over in collaboration with the Three Rivers Bear Smart team and the local community as required by the community plan. I'd like to give you a sense of the gravity of the problem we face in Three Rivers and share photographs to illustrate that problem. The data I will share with you comes from the Bear Smart team. Thirteen volunteers with expertise in communications, education, project and program management, data analysis, government engagement, and volunteer coordination, including members of Sequoia National Park and the Bureau of Land Management, going back to 2021. My colleague has photos. Thank you, Lynn. Here are some images to help you understand the numbers I'm about to report to you and what it looks like on the roadways in Three Rivers, including Highway 198. If the proposed ordinance is approved, we will see more of the same moving forward. We can do better than this, and we must do better than this. As of late last week, 347 confirmed sightings and incidents have been reported in 2025. The team works in cooperation with the local community, but not all incidents are reported, and so the numbers are actually higher. The incident reports include 233 reports of garbage access, 39 reports of attempted access with adverse impact, five reports of structure entry, two reports of attempted structure entry, one report of livestock attacks, three reports of property damage, and four reports of general nuisance such as the toppling of outdoor grills and patio furniture. The plastic carts are targeted, the recycling carts, sorry, are targeted as often as the plastic garbage carts. Forty-seven percent of the garbage-related reports involve metal curbside bins, and at least 75 involve short-term rentals. At least 64% of the trash-related incidents involve code violations, including past plastic carts left out every day, or metal bins illegally located where bears topple them onto the public roads, which has led to road blockages and at least one vehicle accident this year. But listen, bear conflicts are more than a nuisance, they are a public safety, tourism, and liability issue for Tulare County. Every preventable accident, an incident, a property damaged, a bear injured, or a viral video of bears in the trash reflects poorly on Sequoia National Park and the county. Thank you for your time. Please vote no on this ordinance and work with the community as required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next request?
Jennifer Kirk.
My name's Jennifer Kirk, and I've lived in Three Rivers since 2011. I live on what real estate agents call highly desirable Dineley, but is now known as the Dineley Dump because of the number of garbage incidents on it. I'm here today to urge you to vote no on this proposal, and to ask the county's staff to work with our team in Three Rivers and the community, as required by the Three Rivers Community Plan, to draft an ordinance that will actually solve the problem that we're facing, and that's by mandating certified bear resistant carts for all waste streams. Without a requirement for current bear resistance certification for carts and bins, this ordinance will not work. And let me show you. So, in these photos, you see the Toter bins that we just saw the video of, like we have over here, and you can see that even though they have a latching mechanism, they don't stop the bears from getting into the trash. So, it doesn't solve the problem. In addition, as you saw from the previous speaker's photos, recycling containers make up a large portion of the bear incidents and should be included in the ordinance. Many short-term rental visitors are not educated about proper recycling procedures, and as a result, recycling containers are also targets for bears. And remember, 75% of the incidents that we've documented involve short-term rentals. And then, as you can see, the metal bins that would be required by this ordinance, they're about half the bear problems that we have. And you can see in these pictures that the customer has have them locked, secured as they're designed to be, but it still doesn't work. The bears are able to get into them. And so, that is not a solution that's going to work. And then, as you can see in this photo, there's oncoming traffic and a car going that way, there's a bin in the roadway. You know how windy our roads are in Three Rivers, there's a lot of blind car curves, there's a lot of tourists that don't understand how to drive in that, but many times, residents and motorists have to actually, especially on Highway 198, cross the double yellow line to avoid trash and bins in the roadway. And that's a public safety issue. As you heard, there's already been one auto crash because of that. And then, finally, the last thing about the containers that you need to mandate for this ordinance is that they have to be accessible for seniors and for disabled individuals, which make up a significant portion of our population. So, I urge you to include a lighter 64-gallon cart option in the ordinance, and to mandate a waste cart option that does not require two hands and significant grip strength to operate. I know that my hands are not able to do jars like, as well as I could a few years ago, and they're getting worse, so that's important. Thank you so much for addressing this issue, and...
Thank you for your comments.
Hope you will vote no.
Emily Hansen.
My name is Emily Hansen, I'm a resident of Three Rivers, and I'm here to ask you to vote no on the proposed ordinance. Three Rivers is one of Tulare County's most distinctive communities, the gateway to Sequoia National Park, world-renowned destination that draws over 1 million visitors annually, and generates nearly $3 million in transient occupancy tax revenue, annually. Yet, the community that hosts and supports this tourism sees none of that revenue returned to address its basic on-the-ground needs. One of these needs is urgent, a practical, affordable, and effective bear resistant waste system. We are a resilient and resourceful community, but when it comes to keeping bears out of trash, our options are limited. We need the county's partnership. The current proposed ordinance does not solve the problem, and as it stands, it's a waste of the county's time and money. As a recovering CPA, I like to look at the numbers. So, here are a few. Three Rivers' population was 2053 and 2020. Our median age is 56, and 33% of our population is 65 and older. These residents are on a fixed income. Employment rate is under 50% in the community, 25% of households earn below $50,000 annually. Additionally, as Jenny mentioned, 20% of our population is disabled. The extra $12 a month fee is a 30% increase over current pricing. Maintenance is already included in contract pricing, and customers are obligated, under the current contract, to pay in full for a replacement bin. The $12 a month fee is in excess of these costs. You say a new bin is $250, but we know that rehabilitated bins are regularly put in circulation in the community. This chart shows several other bear communities across the country that have approached cost implementation in more reasonable ways. They're utilizing grants from the county to offset cost to residents, or formulating plans with lower monthly fees. Zero, $4 per month, $1.59 a month, $3.50 a month, a $30 one-time fee. A lot of these communities are using that occupancy tax revenue to offset this cost to residents. There are opportunities, and if you work with the Bear Smart team, we can collaborate and find ways for less cost to implementation. The permanent price increase is completely unreasonable. We know that there are 610 short-term rentals in Three Rivers, and as previously stated, 75% of these incidents are coming from these rental properties. This cost would unnecessarily burden owner-occupied households for a problem that is mostly attributed to investment properties with absentee owners. Thank you for your time. Please vote no on this proposed ordinance, and work with the Bear Smart team and the community as required in your community plan to come up with a better ordinance.
Thank you.
Lili De Silva.
I am Lili De Silvestro, and I have been a Three Rivers resident who has been working to solve this problem, the bear trash problem in Three Rivers, since 2014. So, I trust that all of you and everybody in this room, and I know Mid Valley is included, have the same goal, which is to solve the trash problem in Three Rivers. For months, the Bear Smart team has been sharing a simple formula with the solid waste department, which is full bear resistance plus affordability plus community collaboration equals success. This simple formula has worked in thousands of Bear Smart communities across the United States and Canada. So, for months, the Bear Smart team has been asking the solid waste department to collaborate with us, to implement this simple formula. Instead, we were given this proposed ordinance on Thursday. It is a proposal that implements absolutely none of this simple formula, no aspect of it. And I do want to mention that the bin that's over here is not certified. You can see that it's approval pending, and when I spoke with Toter about it, they said that Mid Valley has never produced a, or purchased a certified bear resistant cart. So, what will happen if this ordinance is approved? We have a pretty good idea, because there are other communities that have also failed to implement this simple formula. And you can take a look at some of the Tahoe communities for some very sobering examples of this. So, what happens? The number of incidents increase, bears become more habituated to human-derived food, they become more accustomed to people, this makes them more bold, they break into homes with increasing frequency, they break into cars, and as we've seen in California, they even kill people. So, communities that have failed to implement this simple formula have to turn their homes into electrified fortresses. Electric mats at every door and every window deliver a painful shock. This doesn't sound like a great short-term rental scenario, right? So, let's not fail. We have already had home entry, some terrible home entry, car entry, and considerable property damage, but if we implement this simple formula this winter, the cubs next spring will not be raised as garbage bears, and our older bears can start to relearning to be wild. So, I urge you to collaborate with us, to work with us, for full bear resistance and for board and affordability. I urge you to reject this proposed ordinance and instruct the solid waste department to collaborate with the Bear Smart team and the community. We will succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment.
Lynn Gassaway.
I don't know if it's polished, my presentation. My name's Lynn Gassaway, I'm relatively new to Three Rivers, and I would just, like you say, I would hope that we could find something that is cheaper and easy for people who don't have a lot of waste. I just had a shoulder replacement surgery, and it was hard enough to just get the regular bin out, and trying to have to do a bin that has, you have to use two hands, is that much harder? And there are a lot of people in the community that could use that help on both the ease in use and the cost. We do appreciate that there's being, work being done to solve our bear problem and the garbage, but just to be able to walk around the community on a dog walk and not see the garbage all over the place, and the bears coming in and harassing my community, if we could come to a solution on that, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next public comment.
Linda Ketcher.
Good morning. My name is Linda Kircher. I'm a resident of Three Rivers, I've been there for four years. Here's what's happening currently. We modified our trash can some time ago to ensure that the bears couldn't get in. After one failure, we learned how to do it correctly. It's been working properly for nearly four years now. Without notifying us, we began to be charged the $12 a month. We've been paying that. So, when we discovered this, due to information coming from a neighbor to whom the same thing happened, we asked for the bear-proof can, the bear-proof can. We received one of these. My husband was out of town, and I went to throw my trash away. I broke my arm four months ago. That things, that video stated that it takes one hand? Go back to the picture. Pinch the tool, lift with the other hand. It absolutely requires two hands. I cannot take out my own trash with a Toter that is non-certified to protect from the bears, for which I was already paying. A regular can that could work and caused no problem for the disposal company. You ask a disposal company to propose an ordinance that you're going to pass, and who do you think that ordinance is going to benefit? There is no reason for that charge to be in perpetuity. This ordinance needs to be relooked at and redone again with the information from the bear-proof team in Three Rivers. Thank you.
All right, next public comment.
Shannon Malloy.
Hello, my name is Shannon Malloy, and I am an eight-year resident and business owner in Three Rivers. I speak here to the men and women of Tulare County Supervisor Board. I appeal here first to your honor, and second to your accepted responsibilities to advocate for the needs of your constituents and to resolve problems with county services. The negotiated contract with Mid Valley lacks parameters of service for wildlife prevention, which has become an increasingly pressing issue with an unrestricted growth of short-term rentals. As documented with the data which has been shared with you by the Bear Weiss Three Rivers Committee, short-term rental trash is particularly tempting to wildlife as it often contains much more disposed food than a normal household, is left out for extra days in the trash can, and lastly, one can may include trash upwards of 10-plus people versus a normal household family size of four people per week. The bear team has painstakingly volunteered their time to collect data and conduct research on solutions this past summer in support of a trash-free community and for the safety of wildlife and humans. I believe this data has illustrated for you the breadth of daily interactions with street trash. The county contract with Mid Valley indicates that, quote, "Once discarded materials are placed in a container for collection, ownership of such discarded materials shall transfer to contractor." Thus, it appears well within the scope of Mid Valley's contracted responsibilities to resolve this trash problem, which you have now had a peek into the scope of. Additionally, through Mid, though Mid Valley has proposed a wildlife-resistant can, this can does not meet the needs of either being certified against wildlife, nor being a suitable recommendation for the 33% of elderly representatives of our community, an unnecessarily discriminatory mandate. Luckily, the Bear Smart team has done integral legwork researching similar communities and identifying successful cans. I urge you to consider their suggestions to remedy the problem most quickly and effectively, rather than dragging our community through a cycle of trash can rollout that does not address the outlined problem. The ordinance must not be passed because, one, the ordinance lists that the bear-resistant container replacement must be purchased by the customer when it is within the parameters of Mid Valley's original contract to maintain... of Mid Valley's original contract to maintain trash receptacles and all other required equipment. And in addition, the customer doesn't, in this case, believe that Mid Valley has chosen a can which will not be damaged. Two, the ordinance does not explicitly outline how the responsibility of Mid Valley regarding trash placed inside their receptacle has now become the responsibility of the customer. Three, there seems to be an unfortunate conflict of interest for the county as raising the price to the Three Rivers customers for the new enclosure in this system results in an increase of funds directly to the county budget from franchise fees paid as a result of this change. Lastly, as we return to the issue of cost, there are multiple ways to address this, first and most obvious being an allocation for the 2.8 million TOT generated by this community last year, particularly as we see from the data, the reasons listed, and the comparison with Springville that this issue has grown in large part from transients occupying Three Rivers. A second solution would be use a necessary portion of the 5% franchise fee. I'm sure there is other creative solutions. I thus require a no vote to this ordinance and a remedy which includes the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional requests, Adam Carr?
Mr. Chair, that concludes the public comment cards.
Do we have any members of the public or any of the haulers or any representative from Mid Valley who hauls up there? If you want to come forward, go ahead. Both microphones work. Yeah.
Good morning, board. Joseph Kalpkaugh, owner, Mid Valley Disposal. I want to thank everybody that showed up today to make their comments on the bear cart. I'll let you know where we are not, we're right in the middle of this. We have a contract with the county to provide garbage service. We'll do that. If you want to do bear carts, we'll do that as well. A little bit on the cost really quick, I think that was one of the main things, and I want to just walk through that so you can understand and everyone understands what the cost was. We were, last year, we were looking at a new franchise agreement. The county requested that we come up with a bear-resistant cart that would, and a cost for that, it's not in there now, people, there was something that we could offer, but we didn't have a price for it. These bear carts are five times the cost of a regular garbage can, just so you know. A new, a regular garbage can we provide up there runs around $60 a month, or 60 bucks for a cart. They last 12 years with a guaranteed warranty. We can turn those carts back in to our supplier if they get damaged, we can get a new cart from them. The new bear carts, like I said, they're about $275, not $60. And so the cost that they pay now includes a $50 cart, not a $275 cart. I have to go, with this ordinance, Mid Valley's, they have to buy 1,000 carts at $275,000 that are not contemplated in that current rate today. The rate, the carts that are up there are contemplated in the current rates. So I'm going to have to remove 1,000 good carts. Some of them will probably not, never go back out again. I have to replace them, deliver a brand-new cart at $275, and then dispose of all the other carts. There's a cost to do that, right? It's not, I mean, there's a huge cost to do that. It's going to be probably a half a million dollars to go up there and do this. We'll do it. We're on board. This cart, we use it not just in Three Rivers, we use it in Shaver Lake. I have videos on my phone of bears jumping on this cart. I have them at my house in Shaver Lake. They work. We have not had a problem with them. Again, there is a five-year warranty, so it's half the life of a regular cart, knowing that it can be damaged. We're putting them up in highly, in areas of elevation where there are bears. It's a problem. There is no doubt that bears are a problem. We want to solve that problem as well with the county. If this is the way to go, we're all for it. Any questions?
Well, I appreciate you bringing up the fact that you haul up in Shaver Lake as well, because I wanted to make sure the point was made that Three Rivers is not the only bear-prone area that you haul in as a hauler, correct?
We have both national parks as well.
So I think that's an important point. This is not a product that you designed, correct? Toter is probably the most prominently used bin, correct? Or is?
Yeah, let me, I mean, so there's, it goes deeper than that, than the toter cart. There is a manufacturer called Wastequip. Wastequip manufactures carts, bins, and trucks, right? So when we buy a Wastequip truck to pick up a Wastequip cart, the warranties tie together on it, and that's why we do that as well. You could get a third-party cart up there, but if the truck damages it with the mechanisms, we have a full replacement on a warranty that we can use the same vendor on everything. That's why we chose this cart. It's strictly business, and it's a better value, it's cheaper long run for the community.
Yeah, and I appreciate you actually commenting on what the various costs are for you. It's not, you know, I'm not going to dictate what your profit's going to be and what your costs are as a county supervisor. You are the business owner, and you're going to recoup the costs of having to meet the mandates put upon you by your jurisdiction that you're hauling within, you have a franchise right to haul in. So you have to meet a mandate, and how you meet that mandate is your call, and you have to pass that on to your customers to make sure that you can survive as a business. And I want to make that point very clear. Okay. Any other questions for the hauler? Go ahead, Supervisor McCary.
So you, Joe, you touched on it, the cost difference. So even on a normal cart, though, you do include that in the bill, right? It's spread out.
Yep, the current carts up there are included in that bill. That's correct.
Right, so they're paying for something already that they already have, and because it's a cost to in business. You talked about Shaver Lake and both national parks. You talking about Skoyen Kings?
Yes, both of them.
And they have complained to you at all about the carts being?
I've only gotten praises out of Shaver Lake. We've rolled them out beginning of this year. There was a big, there's a huge bear problem up there, same as Three Rivers. It's identical. I mean, yeah.
And there's a question regarding the certification of that cart. However, the video shows, it says grizzly certified by somebody on.
So this, this cart you're looking at is not certified. We bought these in December of 2024. There was a little bit, an issue with one of these carts. There's a hole in it that could, a bear could get in. They resolved that issue, and today they are certified. The ones that we would buy for Three Rivers are the newer cart that are certified. This one a year ago was not. It still works. I haven't, like, again, I haven't been Shaver, we haven't had a bear get in one yet.
It's a weep hole for the locking mechanism, so the locking mechanism lasts longer.
Right, and they were able to manipulate that?
Yeah.
They're smart. What about disabled? Have you got any complaints regarding disabled people unable to access them?
I think we have a pull-out service that we offer. If there is a disabled person, they can call us, we can put them on route, the driver will pull it out, dump it, and put it back for them.
Okay, so you do try to, you do accommodate that?
Oh, yeah.
That's all I have right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the hauler?
A lot of questions, some are for the hauler.
If you have any questions specifically for the hauler, this is your time, because we're done with the public comment after this.
So what are the items or concerns? Are there not any recycling? Now, could this, this can, you know, somebody got it, use it as a recycling can, paint it blue, put a, you know, do something to say, this is my recycling?
There's, so there, the recycling, this is an in-depth conversation we had. Do we include the blue card? Do we not include the blue card? If recycling's done properly, if it's done properly, and that's, I mean, that's a, it's a hard thing, I mean, not everyone does it properly. The food, the food's rinsed out of it, it's paper, bottles, and cans, there's no food residue. There should not be a problem. If there are food residues in there, there could possibly be that issue. Again, if it's done properly, then it won't become an issue. There's a green card up there as well, but food waste is exempt in the Three Rivers area, so food waste does not go into the green cart, so we didn't use, we thought that would not be a prudent way to go as well with the green cart. So we just, we looked at the gray one first. If there's a need for the blue one, we can add a blue one on there. I mean, that's, we could do that. We can order blue ones. If that, if there's a demand for a blue cart where they subscribe to a garbage can and they want a blue one, we can add a blue one on there. There will be a fee for that, obviously, because, again, you have to switch this whole $50 can out for a $275 can, deliver it, and get rid of the other one.
So organic waste, food waste and stuff goes in the gray can up there?
It goes in the gray can up there. That's correct. They're exempt from the food waste ordinance, 1383.
Sorry, sorry that Supervisor McCary interrupted.
That's all right, I'm used to it. My other question, it could be for the hauler and also for our staff. Has there been any dialogue with the community regarding, regarding this?
Lou Filstein, Solid Waste. Yeah, we had one meeting, was it two months ago? Just about two months ago. That was the, that was the only outreach from Bear Smart, our staff, and Mid Valley.
Okay. And what, what are certified cans? I mean, what's the difference in this can and a certified can?
Well, this is a certified can, it's just one wasn't passed through the model number. The difference is you've got a, you've got a double wall, you've got a rigid line deal. The animal can't get inside there necessarily, it's not going to pop open. There are instances where things happen, people leave them unsecured, they do pop open, but the difference is, is the thickness of the plastic, and it can get tossed around, the lid can't pop open, is basically.
Is this the only certified can that toter makes?
No, and I think in the packet, there's, there's a list of IGC certified containers across the board. Yeah, I think that's where the question comes into, I mean, we, so we're the, we're ultimately responsible for the cart. The customer's not. The garbage, the garbage man is. We have to go procure them. Again, there's a reason why we chose this one. It is certified. There are, there's a Kodiak one out there. I think it's $500 or $600, or $500, you guys probably know. So again, when we put the $12 together with the county, it was based upon this cart. At 275, if there's a $500 cart that they want, we'll have to put that back in the model ordinance and the price to adjust, adjust that up a little bit. And so that's, and as long as it works with our truck, we, again, this is a cart that we're not familiar with.
Right, and that was my other question, is another cart, and I don't know what the folks from Three Rivers are referring to when they say a different cart than this, would that other cart require, you know, manual, you know, somebody to get out of the truck and do something manually? Would it not work with just a regular, you know, pickup and dump, you know, into the truck? I don't know. I don't know if anybody knows that.
We know what, I mean, again, we're.
This isn't for dialogue back and forth, you're asking the hauler directly to.
I am, but I would like to ask somebody from the community what they mean by that. I don't know if they have a representative that could answer that.
Yeah, so I've been leading the Bear.
Can you move the mic? Thank you.
Yes, yeah, so I've been leading the Bear Smart Three Rivers team for quite some time now, so I should hopefully be able to answer your question.
So is it something different than, than this can? Is it a different maker? Is it a different, what's the difference in what you guys keep saying it's, this is certified, but you're thinking of something different?
This one is not certified. They have not yet provided a certified cart for us. The certified carts actually have a completely different material, they have a different form that's used, and as they mentioned, the lock was actually modified. This is, was a test version that wasn't ever intended to be on the market.
But they said they're going to be bringing the certified.
Yeah, yeah, so if they bring the certified ones, that's right. So there are two currently that meet our requirements. One is the Kodiak can that's from Northland Products, and the other is the toter. The issue with the toter is that it does require two hands, whereas the Kodiak doesn't. It's also newly certified, so it hasn't been on the market long, and the initial comments that are coming in from other communities, especially those in Florida and Colorado, is that the locks are, have a tendency to rest. So that's an issue that the Kodiak doesn't have. So the Kodiak is one-handed, it costs about the same amount, and it's been in use and certified for 10 years. The other thing I want to mention, though, is that we're talking about having the 64-gallon available as well. Most of our residents would only need the 64-gallon. It costs much less, and it weighs a lot less. These weigh over 50 pounds, so they're definitely difficult for a lot of our community to handle.
But they can request rollout service. I know you can do that in the city.
That costs, that costs, that costs more than most of our community can afford, especially our seniors and disabled.
Oh, it's not a?
No, it's not free.
A complimentary service?
No, it is not.
I think it is in Visalia.
The other thing that I want to mention is that the ordinance that was, that was written up does require that we pay for a full replacement cost if there's any issue with them. That was something that was misunderstood before.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for now.
At this time, I'm going to close the public comment. We've received the emails and comment in the chambers, and I'm going to bring it back to the board for deliberations.
Yes. Oh. All right, thank you, Chair. First, I do want to acknowledge the residents here today as well as those that are listening online. Before us today is an ordinance that aims to address an issue that has challenged the foothills for years, for many years. But what is before us today does not rise to that standard. It is not a solution built on partnership or data or trust. It's a reaction, one that risks deepening a wound that has already gone untreated for far too long. Let's begin what has led us here. Three Rivers has had four different supervisors in 10 years. Again, four different supervisors in 10 years. That kind of turnover is destabilizing. When leadership changes this often, institutional memory is lost, relationships must be rebuilt, and progress slows to a crawl. For residents, it feels like starting over again and again and again without resolution, without continuity, without hope that the county is truly listening. And I do apologize to Mid Valley because we have been placed in this middle. Three Rivers deserves consistency, it deserves presence, and it deserves leadership that invests. And I do not think that the solid waste department has done just that. This ordinance is a shortcut, and the shortcuts rarely lead to sustainable outcomes. Yes, the solid waste department met with the Bear Smart Three Rivers team on September 24th, one meeting. One meeting after the ordinance was already written is called notification, not collaboration. We can't check the box of community engagement after the decision has already been made. Residents have been, have told me again and again that their concerns go unanswered, that their emails vanish, that their calls echo in silence, and I want to be very clear that if that is true, then this is a breakdown in governance. We are told that there is a system in place for residents to submit complaints, but a system that doesn't respond is worrisome for many. If residents take the time to voice their concerns, they deserve acknowledgement, follow-through, and results. They also have every right to verify that their voices are heard, to see the record of their engagement, to know that their county is accountable. There is a process for that, and I urge residents to use that mechanism, and that mechanism is PRA. And reasons why they're not reporting anymore? Because there's no follow-through to begin with. And so the residents have been tired and tired because there is no follow-through from solid waste department. Now let's talk about fairness, because this is where policy meets principle. This ordinance would impose a $12 monthly surcharge per household and a 10% increase for commercial containers. To some, this may seem minor, but to the people of Three Rivers, many of them seniors, many living on fixed income, this is significant, and as you've, as you've heard from the residents today. Meanwhile, that same community contributes, again, and we've said this before and it's been brought up many a times, the 2.1 million last year in transient occupancy taxes. It may not come from them directly, yes, it may not come from them directly from their pockets, but they've had to burden the changes and challenges in their community due to the business transactions that have been happening up in this community. Let's say that again, 2.8 million, almost entirely driven by visitors, short-term rentals, and tourism. And yet, the financial burden of this ordinance falls on its residents. We're effectively asking those who have done the least to cause this problem to pay the most to fix it. That's misplaced responsibility. If we are serious about equity, then we should be using a portion of that, the same funds generated by the very activity that creates the overflow of trash and human-bear conflict to help cover these costs. But I know that we won't probably get there. Even beyond cost, this ordinance fails on substance. It requires bear-resistant containers only for gray waste carts, again, not for the recycling or the organics. We've talked about that. But as has been mentioned, bears don't discriminate between bins, they follow the scent of food. We cannot legislate biology out of existence. If we want a bear-resistant community, we need a comprehensive, science-based strategy. What we have before us is a piecemeal patch. Partial bear resistance is no bear resistance. Communities across the Mountain West, like Mammoth Lakes, Tahoe, Aspen, Big Sky, have developed bear-smart models that pair certified bear-resistant infrastructure with education, visitor accountability, and local stewardship. These programs work because they are community-built and scientifically grounded. And again, I'm sorry that I'm passionate about this, but this has been impacting and affecting me for quite some time. Three Rivers has asked us for years to adopt that same approach. Instead, we've given them a mandate without a partnership. Instead, we've given them a mandate without a partnership. We also cannot ignore accessibility. These proposed carts, as already been mentioned, weighing over 50 pounds and require two hands to open. For seniors and residents living with disabilities, this is exclusionary. The Aging and Community Group has already sounded the alarm, and they are right to do so as well. We cannot write ordinance that unintentionally sideline our elders, and then a policy that makes compliance impossible for a portion of our population is also regression. At its heart, this issue is about trust. Trust between the county and the community, trust between leadership and its residents, trust that when people speak, their government listens, not dismisses. Three Rivers has done everything we ask of an engaged community. They've organized, they've created a Bear Smart team that unfortunately you have not been able to connect with for more than just one meeting. They've gathered data, they've built coalition, and they've offered solutions. And I know that we're not going to get 100% on one side and 100% on another side, but again, we need to meet in the middle. What they have not received is consistency, and that is partnership. And partnership is the price of doing business as a public agency, right? That partnership is the price of doing business. So what do we do? Again, I still believe that we bring together the Bear Smart team, Sequoia Conservancy, whether it's also Fish and Wildlife, Mid Valley Disposal, and yes, the residents themselves. We designed a Bear Smart to Tulare County, not a quick fix, but a comprehensive collaborative model grounded in education and environmental integrity as well. It's about whether people in unincorporated rural and historically underrepresented communities believe that their government sees them and truly sees them. For far too long, this town has been on the edge, yes, geographically, but Three Rivers is also where the edge of policy can meet the heart of its people if we are doing our job correctly. And so, again, I cannot support this ordinance as written. It is not complete, it is not equitable, and it's not collaborative. We can do better, and yes, we must do better. And we owe it to Three Rivers and to every community that feels unheard to prove that government still listens, and still learns, and still works with its people. I oppose this measure as written, and I urge my colleagues, and I'm sorry to put it out there, but especially Supervisor Townsend, who also shares a region just like District 4, to oppose this measure as well.
Well, I, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna break the order here. I have other requests. But I take deep offense to saying that rural areas have been historically underrepresented and misrepresented. I've served on this Board of Supervisors. I'm in my 17th year, and I've done a damn good job, and I've worked hard to represent rural areas and make sure they have a voice. I may not represent only just a portion of my population, like my colleague, who has picked and chosen specific interest groups to cater to.
It is this issue, this issue that we're talking about.
Mr. Valero, you can be quiet when you don't have the floor. I've given you the floor. I have the floor at this time. So keep your mouth shut, please.
So I take great pride in representing all of my communities, not just a portion of them. You do represent short-term rentals as well as permanent residents. You don't represent just a portion of the population. Now, that impassioned, pre-typed reelection speech, you know, I can appreciate that, but I think that this is something that needs to focus on an issue that has been brought to the attention of the county. And I will not throw my county staff under the bus saying that they do a poor job and that they did not do any effort, put any effort forward to make sure that this issue was resolved adequately. You did have community outreach. You took into consideration community opinion. While it may not have been exactly what the District 4 supervisor may have prescribed, you entertained feedback and spoke directly with residents who were concerned, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the work that all of our county staff does. The work that you do is not always appreciated. But from this dais, I appreciate you, and I will not throw you under the bus. So I say thank you for doing what you do. I'm gonna have other comments, but I just had to say that. Supervisor McCary.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to start off by saying that I've been everywhere in this county, day and night, throughout my law enforcement career, and I've seen other communities where trash scattered everywhere. And there's no bears in that community. It's dogs and coyotes and everything else getting into it. I patrolled Three Rivers for several years, day and night, going up there. And I saw bears, deer, coyotes, loose dogs, squirrels, skunks, raccoons, all going through the trash and getting out of there. I remember driving by and a raccoon popping his head up, scared the what out of me. Anyway, in the middle of the night. So I understand that bears is a big issue. And they're being blamed for the culprit of this, but there's also other things that could be prevented by this that maybe it's not a bear. Now, Three Rivers is right next to the park. The park, they are protected, and they are overpopulated. And you have moved into a home of the bears. They've been there for many, 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 many years, and you moved into their home. So we do have to have an interface with them, and we have to do what we can to control them. And I remember going to the National Park one time for a meeting, and it was our job at the Sheriff's Department, we brought sodas. And they had us back up to the building, and they put a ranger next to the car to protect our unit from getting destroyed because the bear was going to come get our sodas. And they were literally walking in the parking lot like feral cats, just walking around. Of course, they were a lot calmer than feral cats. So I've seen it, and I know very well that there is a problem. The cost of the cans, I can understand. However, I live out in the county, and I know, and it was said here today, that even my regular cans, that cost is included in my service that I have to pay. This can is now certified. Maybe the other one wasn't, but I'm told it's now certified, and what we have. We have the costs that they incur, and we all know that everything is a responsibility of the customer. I don't care where you go, what you do. The state passes a tax, it filters down, we pay. We talked about that earlier. I don't like it, but that's a fact of life. I do not like it. Was there a community meeting? Yes. Now, maybe it didn't meet your needs or not. Transient occupancy tax. Look, I represented Three Rivers. I'm a little offended by what happened. I spent 90% of my time up there, and I worked with every place up there. My first community meeting, Mid Valley brought up five trash cans of bear cans. That was in the spring, because I knew what was coming in the fall. I knew. Everyone turned their nose up. There's no problem. It's not going to work. Come October, November, everyone's screaming about the bears. Well, and we've had that conversation, and bears, people complained over and over and over. We tried then. There is a need. Transient occupancy tax, you know, I've heard that so many times. I brought the first figures up. I know it's $2 million. However, there's all kinds of services up there. Sheriff's Department, First Responder Service with the fire, roads, it's all split up. It goes through. Plus, it also helps the experience of more tourism to help bring in, so we can provide more services. The people that pay that tax are the customers, the tourists that come. The tourists at Three Rivers residents complain about showing up. Don't shake your head, Noel, because it's true. It's a pass-through. I pay the owner, who then pays it back. It's a pass-through. It's not part of their money. So, nothing is proof. I wore a ballistic vest. I wore a seatbelt. Our cars have seatbags, airbags. Nothing is a proof that you're not going to get injured when you get in a collision or when you get shot on duty. Nothing is proof. It is resistant. And all we're doing to take safety measures and anything we do in life is to mitigate and to reduce costs. So, we talked about someone being disabled, and that's been brought up, that accommodations to be made, right, Joe? Is that correct? So, we talked about other areas deployed. Just right there, Sequoia Kings National Park, right there next door. And they seem, and they're happy with them and they work. So I don't understand what the border is, I don't understand what the border is between Three Rivers and Sequoia. So, I do, I am leaning to all cans, to be honest with you. I know when you go camping and you're up and you're bear canned, man, they like them sweet stuff. And so you got empty soda cans or partial soda cans in there. We may see a problem, but I think that's something that can come back and be addressed. So, I thank you for the pictures. Thank you for coming. Your pictures demonstrate to me that we have to have a need. There is a need. And we can either sit back and do nothing, and be ineffective, and provide nothing to help solve this problem in Three Rivers, or we can do something to work on it. And if it doesn't work, we can always come back and figure out something different. But these are deployed in other communities, and they seem to be working very well. So, staff, thank you. Man, what a kick in the nuts to be told what you were told, and I apologize to you. I really do. That's a disgrace that our staff is treated publicly, and things were made. So, you do an amazing job. It's a hard job. You do what you can, and you're a thankless job. We all are in the way in government. Nobody's ever happy with us. So thank you for everything you've done, and I appreciate it. And I am absolute full supporter of this ordinance.
Alright, Supervisor Shuckling.
Alright, thank you. Couple things I want to mention. A lot of the, I got a lot of letters. A lot of them had the same concerns, the $12 a month charge in perpetuity, the certified can, wanting to use TOT. So I'm going to address those. From what I've seen today, and I just pulled up a video of the Kodiak can, to me, I mean, just, you know, from the video and whatnot, there doesn't really seem to be a lot of difference. This is now a certified can, so I think this is, hopefully, will suffice. If it doesn't, then maybe we come back to it, or come back to the hauler and see what can be done. The TOT, as Supervisor McCary said, we provide a lot of safety services, and that's what that TOT is for. So I am not in agreement that TOT should be used to pay for these trash cans or any additional service. My biggest heartache on this is the $12 a month in perpetuity. You know, I know Joe said there's other costs, and I understand that. I don't know if these cans that you pull, the regular cans, can be used somewhere else. And, you know, somebody calls, like I said, I have a cracked can, a broken hinge, they replace it. So, you know, if they're in good enough condition, if they could be used for that. Maybe rather than, you know, paying the $12 a month for, you know, the price of the can, you pay for double the price of the can to cover those additional costs, you know. I don't know. But to me, that's the biggest heartache in this whole thing. And so at this time, I'm not really sure if I can support the ordinance. And I too want to apologize for the behaviors that you've seen up here today because it was very inappropriate on many parts, and should not be indicative of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you for your comments. I want to say a few other, make a few other comments. You know, the comment was made about the culprit of this being short-term rentals, but, you know, short-term rentals also bring in a lot of tax revenue to Tulare County. The TOT tax that Supervisor McCary mentioned, the sales tax at local restaurants or local stores. There are benefits to that, and, you know, allocating dollar for dollar what's received, just paid back into the community. You know, I don't know, can you really quantify everything that's invested in the community by the county in terms of public safety services, both fire and police, all of the others up and down? We don't do that in any other community. I also think that the hauler is the solid waste expert. We are not. They say that's a bear-resistant or certified can. We saw a pretty fancy video that showed the same. And, you know, again, both of my colleagues that have spoken about this have said, if it doesn't work, we can address it, and we can fix it at a later date. I used to live in the city of Tulare, and I paid, I want to say my solid waste hauling fees were probably 20 to 30% cheaper than what they are, were, are now in the unincorporated area of the county. But I have chosen to live in the unincorporated area, not inside city limits. There's more of an economy of scale inside the city when you go door-to-door, and it's, you know, you're getting 10 trash carts on one street versus, you know, having to drive 10 miles to get, you know, five carts. So there's a higher cost of living in the unincorporated community, or in the unincorporated area, and that's where I have chosen to live. So, the $12 fee, it's already more expensive to collect solid waste in unincorporated areas, let alone in unincorporated mountainous areas, let alone having to deal with replacing and upgrading, you know, various carts in mountainous areas that are more prone to bears. And so, you know, I'm going to leave that up to the hauler. I think I've already made my various points. I am supportive of this ordinance. I do think that this is something that is addressing a need in the community. While it may not be addressing the deemed culprit in short-term rentals only, if short-term rentals have to have a certain type of can, I think everybody should have that same can. Supervisor McCary.
Thank you. You know, one thing I forgot to add is that Three Rivers is the only mountain community, really, that has this much trash service. I think Badger has some stuff too. But on the South County, you got to use a satellite station. My mom had a place at Pine Flat above California Hot Springs. We still have it. And I went to take trash, a pickup loader trash, to the satellite station there. It cost me $16 for a backup truckload because there is such an increase in costs to provide that service. So, you know, I said, I don't like it, but the reality is, is that, again, it all trickles downhill to the consumer, no matter what happens. So, I don't know what they pay in the other communities, but I think it's all about the same price. Lucas shaking his head, yes. So, you know, unfortunately, that's where you live, it is more expensive. I live out in the country. It's more expensive than I have, the services I get. So, I get it. Anyway, I just wanted to pass that on, that you could get charged $16 a pickup load.
Supervisor Townsend, do you have anything you want to add to the discussion? You've been awfully quiet down there.
Yeah, just, you know, interesting kind of a take that I have on it, and that is that whenever it was being discussed, they were talking about moving it over to the Springville area. And I can tell you that I live in Springville. I have had a few bears over the years come in and knock over trash cans. I asked a couple of people that I know in Camp Nelson that deal with them all the time, because there is a bear overpopulation right now. That is directly attributable, by the way, to disallowing hunting dogs, hunting bear. The California Fish and Wildlife, you can talk to, that, things trickle down like that because now they don't take the bear during the year. You get way less harvesting of the bears, and so they become overpopulated in the area. So Camp Nelson will call about people there, but what they found out when the bears were coming in there is there was a couple of people that were feeding them, thinking they were starving. They're poor wild animals, so they're feeding the bear, and they're bringing them in. So whenever that stopped, the tremendous amount of problems stopped. There's still a problem, and so I asked, hey, what about the trash cans? They said, well, when we leave the cabin, we just take a paintbrush and put ammonia by the door. Never had a bear problem. Because the bears hate ammonia. So, we've got a little bottle of ammonia at our house, pour it on top of the trash can. If we happen to have food waste, we're usually pretty careful about double bagging if you have food waste, and put that on there. I think what I'm hearing, the problem is, is you have so many short-term rentals, you don't have the owner occupier that can take those sort of steps. So you just get a lot of food trash in there. So, a couple of things we could do. We could do nothing and just allow it to continue to go as it is. They can put it on the short-term rental people or community members to police it themselves. We could approve this and try this step towards it, even if it's not 100%. Or, we could take a step back and look at short-term rentals again and see if we need to mandate them doing trash services this way, because I heard a lot of complaints about, well, if you do this, it's going to affect those people that don't have short-term rentals. Okay, we can go back and relook at our short-term rental ordinance and say, well, in that area, we can require them to do those trash cans that are resistant the way that the community wants them to be, and they can bear the cost of those, which will be, and if you want to the cans that you want, it'll be, I heard a couple of numbers thrown out there. I think it's over $500 for one of the Kodiak cans that I looked up online really quick while we were talking. So, anyway, we could always go back and take aim at the STRs. It seems like the fairest way would be just to try this, see how it works for a while, and then come back and revisit it if we're not, if, I think we took the stance that we weren't going to limit STRs, and we weren't going to put any overt regulations on top of them. I think that's been our stance. I think that's been our stance so far, so we would have to revisit that to directly go after the STRs.
All right, so at this time, I will entertain a motion from a member of the board. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor McCary to approve this as presented. We have a second from Supervisor Townsend. Please cast your votes. Motion passes three to two, with Supervisors McCary, Vanderpoel, and Townsend voting for, and Supervisor Shucklean and Valero voting against. That concludes this agenda item. I will now look to County Council to see if we have need for closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have need for closed session. Items A and D are off calendar. The balance of the agenda will be heard, and I do not anticipate any announcement out.
All right, thank you. Meeting is adjourned to closed session at this time.